Yes, we're late. Seven, actually seven oh one, we'll call the meeting to order. You guys want to do the pledge allegiance, please? Missy, you want to do the roll call?
Tanya.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Libby.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
And we have a quorum. And we need to have a motion to approve the meeting agenda if there's no changes. I'm assuming there's no changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And need to have a motion to approve the minutes from September fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, new business, we have Beth Marsh from Bookkeeping Plus for the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget. Hi, Beth.
Okay, I've gone over this with several of you in the workshop, but in case since not everyone was here, I just wanted to make sure we go over all of that. So, um, we're going over the counts that are levied, um, for the most part, so, um, the changes in the budget were basically for salaries for across the board were three percent. We did put in this budget, um, because since this year it's been this way for so long, we've moved the clerk treasurer salary to forty-five thousand, which is still fairly low compared to other clerk treasures, but we put that in there. We allowed, um, we've got in there also for a part-time person for the planning department. We've added two full-time officers for the police department. But one of them will not start until July, so really it's one and a half of this year's budget until the levy and everything catches up. We've increased the specialty pay from a hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars on the police department. And then we've, um, the supplies pretty much are the same. Like I said, they're three percent. The professional fees, um, are at three percent. Um, we've added about ten percent for insurance. We've increased the trash contract for, per the contract, but then it also offsets against the revenue. So far, it's been determined the last few years, we've not needed the animal controls. We took that portion out. And then capital outlays, we have fifteen thousand dollars in for a new sign. Twenty-five, twenty thousand for new furnishings for the building, two officers, police vehicles, um, and a police computer server. That's what's for the general fund. Then for, um, local road and street, it's just our normal, we really don't have anything special in there. Just we normally just do budget of fifty thousand just for streets for availability and allow that to grow. This year, we had to use some of the money, so we'll actually be doing, the next time we'll be doing additional appropriation for some of the monies. We may be able to use it from some of our other funds, but just in case we want to make sure we have it appropriated, which we, you guys have already approved all of this. Um, I do have under, um, the low it to additional, which is not a levy fund, but just want to let you know, be aware, we have two additional police officer vehicles from there in, in there for that to keep on the rotation, plus for the new officers vehicles. And then on MVH or motor vehicle highway, the big changes, we had eight thousand added to professional services, um, for training. We, um, have also capital outlays. We've got, um, purchase of two vehicles, um, a bucket truck, a generator and a road roller, of which a lot of those are going to be used, but then we can use them for leases. There's just some things that we need to replace for that. And in the park, there's really not anything as far as the normal three percent, the salaries, um, normal expenses. Um, and then on capital outlays as well, we've got twenty-five thousand dollars for trails and then seventy-five, seventy thousand dollars for, um, playground equipment. And then potentially eighty thousand for other equipment. Then, um, basically our CCI or community capital, um, is pretty much the same. We're not doing anything there, just our normal, um, and same with CCD. The overall budget did increase about twenty-five percent. But like I said, do in part, most of it is for capital outlays and we've got the increased levy because our levy for this year is one million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five fifty-three, and our circuit breakers, um, are five hundred and fifteen, one hundred. Um, we're also, um, going for an excess levy appeal of two hundred thousand. We're budgeting for two hundred thousand, but we think we'll probably get about a hundred and sixty thousand as far as because of the growth in the community. So that's pretty much the overall effect, um, of everything as far as that. And with all of those items, we are able to cover that with our revenues and everything. Does anyone have any specific questions?
That's okay.
I don't think we have that anymore. Okay. And if you see anything, look this over. You can ask questions. Our public hearing is at the next meeting and the approval is on the sixteenth. So this will be advertised in Gateway, um, probably either tomorrow or Wednesday. I'm waiting one thing from DLGF and I'm waiting to hear on the debt and then everything else is ready to go. It's all uploaded.
That's good.
I've got a question on sidewalks.
Yep.
It's got fifty-four thousand dollars total on twenty-three, but then a zero, just, just, um, disparate dispersed and then fifty-four, but there was, we had sidewalks replaced, didn't we?
But if we did, they may not have came out of that line item.
It just didn't come out of that line item. It just didn't come out of that line item. Okay. There's other places it can come from.
A lot of the sidewalks we do is with the community crossings money as well.
Yeah. So we try to do as much as we can with grant monies that are covered with grants until we have to use levy funds.
How much money's left in that, the budget for doing sidewalks? That much still?
Well, we've actually, you just.
Yeah. At the last council meeting, the council approved to spend, it was like eighty to a hundred thousand dollars in sidewalks and curbs. So we're actually doing that right now.
Yeah.
With as long as Gary gets it, yeah.
Yeah.
I had to go to the contractor that Gary, make sure Gary's.
I'll get back with them about that one sidewalk over there at, uh, Helmcrest. Yeah.
He was on the list.
Good. Seven oh one, Laurel.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, Beth. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
I guess there is no old business, so on to Joe.
We're flying through this tonight, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, first question or the first thing I've got here for you. Um, I let you know at the last meeting that I was getting quotes to resurface or actually surface for the first time, the alley between Illinois Monroe Street. That's one that the council had promised last year. We'd done one alley and said we'd do another one this year. I got three quotes. Uh, one contractor, I'm gonna say really didn't want to do it. Fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty. I got one for thirty-five thousand and then central paving, uh, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that is really in line with, you know, what we paid last year too, so. This was the alley between Illinois Monroe. Yeah, I need approval to, uh, award that to, that's outside of my spending limit, so you guys have to.
What was the, what was the amount again, Joe?
Uh, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the paving of the alley between Illinois Monroe for twenty-nine, seven fifty.
At central paving.
It's with central paving.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. There's a couple of other quick items. I'll just let you know that, uh, you know, as we discussed at the last council meeting, uh, we're going to start paving the Flat Rock Creek subdivision. Contractors have started replacing curbs and sidewalks and the pavers moved in before we even got done and started milling the road. And so they're, they're moving quick. Um, we've got guys out there moving a storm structure and inlet that needs to be relocated. It was in the middle of an ADA ramp, so we're making sure that it's moved. Pavers will be there Thursday morning, so our guys are going to be busting the move, trying to get that relocated and then getting the curb support Wednesday, so we'll be out of their way and ready for paving. Flat Rock Creek, yes. And then, um, also, um, we've been working on the, we've been working on the parking lot, the main street parking lot or the public parking lot, those old curb sections. We can't keep them in place. The trucks run over them, snowplows hit them, trailers hit them, and they're all over the place all the time. It's just a maintenance nightmare. So we started removing those and we're going to put those back with solid concrete. Some of them may not go back. There might be a little bit more of a nuisance and might be better to just leave them out. So some of them we will leave out. Uh, but we're in the process of doing that and then the pavers will show up there next Monday is the plan to start milling that parking lot down. And then hopefully shortly thereafter, we can get that paved as well and restriped. Start making it look a little nicer. And with all the projects we got going on, um, I got three of our guys are in here two days a week, eight hours a day doing training. And that's a little over a month longer, about a month. So every Tuesday and Thursday, they're in here trying to get their distribution certification for water system. So glad to see that, but I really wish I had them out in the field right now because things are kind of busy. As far as the water quality, I don't know if, uh, you guys have gotten any calls. I know utility offices, uh, um, getting several calls on the water quality, the smell and maybe a little bit of hardness. A lot of that is due to the fact that we're in the process of getting this new plant up and running. And with that, we're still running partially on the old plant. The new plant's probably producing a quarter um, of the water that we're producing out to the system right now. The old plant, uh, the softener is no longer functioning. The aerator is still in the old plant, needs to be relocated to the new plant, which will help with some of the smell and help with the iron and everything. Right now they're treating that a little harder with, uh, chlorine. So you might smell a little bit more chlorine in the water. It's still within a good tolerance and a good level, so it's not harmful. But they're looking at possibly two more weeks, then we should be totally on the new plant and up and running and everything working the way it's supposed to. I think they're, uh, they're in a process of redoing one of the wells right now. And as soon as that well's been redone and back tea tested and hooked up to the new plant, then that's when they're going to start disassembling some of the old plants, put on a new plant and totally shut it down. So other than that, unless you have any questions for me, I can give you a little bit of an update for what I know for Broadway. I think I've sent some emails, but I understood the day that you guys, nobody's been getting your emails because of the new thing that nine stars putting in as far as the, uh, safety and, um, fraud and different things where they can't, uh, people can't get into your emails. So, um, NDOT is starting to pave today. They started putting down the first, uh, couple of layers of asphalt. The layers that they're putting down now is a pervious, will let water drain through it. And I can't remember if they said there's another fine layer goes on top of this, or if they're going to go ahead and pour curbs on top of this one. And then they'll have a couple of other layers come back in. It'll be fairly thick asphalt when they get done, but after they get the concrete in and they'll bring the asphalt up close to the top, but they'll leave the surface until the whole project's completed. But then they're going to start in on the sidewalks and doing everything else there on that south side before they open the road back up to the public in November. So we're looking forward to that. I know they've run into some delays on Maple Street. Uh, there's been a, a gas line that's in the way that wasn't supposed to be there. It's, uh, it's in the subgrade of the road, so they're having to come back and move that. Uh, they ended up finding the Duke power line that was in the subgrade that had to be relocated. So they're waiting on Duke, which they may be, they may have already relocated theirs. On the trail portion of the project, the gas company, and I want to say the fiber came and relocated their lines and obviously didn't look at the, uh, prints very well, and they moved them in the way of the storm pipe that's going in. So they're having to come back and do some additional relocation. So there's just a lot of little delays and a lot of hiccups, but, uh, it seems like they're still on track to get it open back up to the public in, uh, mid-November like they originally said. So we keep our fingers crossed.
Did, um, were they supposed to take out the light on the fourteenth or is that the that back?
The light's out now. Part of that is because the poles have to come out there for their, uh, installation of the new poles going in for the new traffic lights that are coming in. Um, I don't know that they're putting a, the light back up. Now, again, I don't want to speak for them because I hear one thing in the meeting and the next day it's totally changed. In fact, I got an email today, said that they were going to close Main Street in the morning and then about an hour or two later, I got one that says we're closing it tonight. So it's, it's closed. At one time, they said they were going to possibly put temporary lights.
That's what that email said on the fourteen.
Okay, so now I don't know that they're going to do that or not. So I don't want to speak for them and put the wrong information.
Yeah, just have them do a follow-up tomorrow, I guess, and find out, uh, what they're going to do with the lights.
Sure. And then I think, uh, every other Wednesday, we're having a progress meeting with them too. So we get updates at that point. They're only good until you walk out of the meeting. Something changes.
Will there be a drive going back to the T-Ball links?
Just like it was before. Yeah, that won't change. Yeah. There won't be as much parking behind the water plant as what there was. I think there was like three rows of parking back there and now I think it was only going to be two rows, but they're going to pave like in front of the tennis courts and try to add some additional parking that was taken away.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam, you got anything for us?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, I wanted to ask a question. Um, at the last redevelopment commission meeting, um, we had put forward a proposal for an electric vehicle charging station in the, um, public parking lot off of Main Street. And, um, first, just some background on that. Um, the way that it came about is there were some, there were some members of public that had, um, asked about them, um, if there's anything the town could do to have them installed. And at the time, we had a, uh, there was a council member who's no longer on council, but had asked, um, about that as well. And of course, we worked on a number of other priorities, but finally came back to that one. So based on that loose direction, um, we modeled it after what they have in the city of Greenfield, um, in their public parking lot off of, um, US forty. And it's, um, it's called a charge point, charging station, and there's basically one pedestal and it provides service to two vehicles. And it's something that you still have to pay for. Um, in terms of the charging capacity on that one in Greenfield, I'm not a hundred percent clear yet on how that works. I'm, I'm not an expert by any means in electric. I don't have an electric vehicle. I don't know how it works, but, um, fast forward to the RDC meeting and they said, well, um, since it's the town's parking lot, we want to have council weigh in on it. And then if they're okay with it, we'd like to see a plan for where you'd like to put it. Um, so basically they were lukewarm on the proposal. So I wanted to know before frankly, we spend any more time, um, on this, if there, if it's still the will of the council to move forward and, and look at it or just scrap it altogether. Um, I guess the last bit of information is in terms of the price, I think it was about fifteen thousand or so, um, to do that. And the idea would be to use it from the redevelopment commission funds. And really, um, the, like anything, there's pros and cons. Um, the, the downside is that you would be taking up, um, two parking spaces in that lot for electric vehicles, although with some of the striping, we could probably regain one of those. So it'd be a net loss of one. Um, and then on the pro side of things is, um, as you know, this infrastructure is becoming more and more prevalent in, in communities all over the place. And it could act as another draw for, for people to come visit the restaurants downtown to have that ability to charge there. So with that, wanted to know what your thoughts were, one way or the other on it. I don't know. I haven't heard anything one way or the other. I do know that, um, Strauss Market, they were looking to do one on their own at one point. And then really quickly, the other bit of information is I did look around to see if there were any grants that were available, um, as part of the, uh, that recent federal inflation reduction package, a big package that they passed. Um, there were grants for communities, but it was a huge number. I mean, I think it was like chunks of four hundred thousand dollars. Obviously it's, it's meant for bigger cities, not small towns. So, um, and even if, even if we were to get a grant, as you know, with some of these grant programs, the amount, especially when the federal government's involved, the amount of paperwork you have to go through and pricing, it's, it can get out of control really quickly. So that's it.
Uh, that's not very cool.
My suggestion, we put this on the agenda so the public can weigh in on it too before we vote anything.
I think it's, I think it's something we need to look at, but I don't know that Main Street's where I would like to see it at, but we can look, but I think it's something we need, at least need to get our eyes on it.
Okay. So probably, would you want to see a plan for where it would be located if?
Well, the landmark is what I was thinking about too. That's what I said. When they redo, if they, all this stuff goes through with Fort Val Action, it'd be a great place to put one out there maybe. Or potentially other places in town.
Is there any consensus on geographically where you might want to have it?
I'd say close to Main Street. Doesn't have to be on Main Street, but very close, the next block or, you know.
Maybe we do a couple of options. One, uh, in the larger parking lot and then another one near landmark. Sound good?
Yeah.
Take it from there, see what you think.
Are those ones that you said that Greenfield has? Are those the, like Hart was talking about, the difference in the type of power, the boost, the turbo charge?
That I don't know. And I've got to find that out from the sales rep. And frankly, I think, um, when we put it as a formal item on the agenda for your consideration is, it should be led by the sales rep. I mean, they're obviously the ones that are more knowledgeable.
Right. Yeah, none of us really know, I guess.
Is it for one vehicle at a time?
No, it'd be for two. So it's one pedestal and kind of like a gas pump. There's two different, uh, ports you plug in. So.
Okay. Does it have any effect on like the electric grid of the town or anything like that? Like how much electricity is it used? Does it, you know, that type of thing? Do we know anything about that?
I don't know.
Right.
Use that.
Yeah. When do you recoup your money from? And how long does it take return on investment? That'd be nice to know, you know, that type of thing.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. That's it for me, unless you had any questions or anything else.
Did you email out your activity thing and we just, none of us got it? Cause I didn't see it.
No, on Friday. I was still sitting.
That's fine. I just.
I can send it out tomorrow.
That's fine.
Because there are a few different, um, ongoing things that want to, um, explain.
Yeah, I was trying to go through all the emails, but I'm not sure if I got them all or not.
I'll say, sorry about that. I'll send it tomorrow morning.
We have some residents from Blossom Trace. You want to fill them in on, uh, what the conversation between, um, Jake, uh, is going to do with the.
Yeah, I heard that there, I understand that there's some concern, um, for member, from residents in, um, Old Bridge about the status of Jake Burgess's still unfinished garage. Um, as you know, the BZA passed a stipulation as part of their variance package to require that that be permitted and completed by December first. And we were also led to believe by Mr. Burgess that he was pretty close to being able to do that anyway, in terms of how much the building was built. So, um, based on the inquiries from the residents, I asked Jake where he's at with the project, if the ball's in his court. Um, and he said that at this point, he's looking to possibly sell the building to see if it's, if anybody will buy the components to it. But he is aware of that December first deadline.
What are the fines on that after December first?
Well, um, we would have to determine if it's, if it's incomplete, but if, if he doesn't have it done by December first, um, obviously there would be code enforcement action that's taken against him. That could include fines and or court. And I think we would be, um.
Do you know what our fines are?
Well, the, the fines are, the maximum that you can charge under the law, my understanding is twenty-five hundred dollars per day for a violation.
Do we have something in writing that it's set in stone right now?
Yeah.
For the, for the, for this fine or fines in general?
In general.
In general, um, fines in general are at the discretion. It's, it, the way it's written in town code is at the discretion of the town manager slash planning and building director.
Okay.
Um, and, and we obviously don't issue fines that often. Um, but generally speaking, when they, when they are issued is, um, we base it on the, the type of infraction and, um, you know, what it is in terms of the overall cost of the project to, you know, depending on, it, it depends on the, on the case. It can go from as little as, you know, we've done ten dollars a day up to a one-time fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. We've done that a couple of times. So it, it varies and I, I, I don't know what we would end up doing on this. I think we'll cross that bridge if we get to it, but hopefully we don't. Hopefully it's, um, he submits for the permit and, um, you know, he's still working with his attorney. So presumably they're still interested in seeing this through.
I think it'd probably be a good idea to have a plan before December first of what we were going to do if it weren't to happen instead of waiting until December first.
Okay.
I would think, I mean.
Um, we can certainly talk about that. That's, that's the direction.
Good evening, council. Uh, Heath Luther Parks Manager for the record. Just got a couple of things, uh, on the lines of concrete and spending money. I've reached out to some individual contractors about, um, finishing up that bridge in the park. Um, it's time that we kind of get that done after the course conversation with Joe and, uh, and just kind of toiling over how we need to do the steps. The bridge itself is done. We need to get those steps finished up. We decided that we should look into a more permanent solution, less maintenance solution from a step perspective, instead of throwing down wood, you know, even composite can rot. You know, if you guys know that area well, it floods on occasion. Um, and so I've got, uh, quotes ranging from twenty-six thousand dollars to do some two sets of steps to the lowest being thirteen thousand. Um, and so it's obviously over my spending limit. Um, we've got money in the trails budget set aside for things like this. Um, so I'm asking to be able to utilize, uh, the Capital LAs group for, uh, trails money. Um, it's in there. Like I said, we've got about twenty thousand in there. Um, we, I did also get some, um, quotes on curbing. If you guys are familiar with kind of the, the curve around up above by the shelter house, looking down over the Little League field. Um, there were those, uh, wooden old telephone poles that kind of line the road. We had pulled those out. Those are rotted. Um, we have some composite wood to be able to replace those with, but after talking with Joe, um, we may want to look into some curbing as opposed to, you know, something a little bit less maintenance, um, a little bit more visible, um, from, we have to have something back up essentially for the winter, uh, with that uh, decline there from the road down to the creek. If anybody were to slide off of that, you know, in the winter and not have anything to stop them, we're, we're going to have a problem. So, um, we're not there yet with money. I want to get the steps done first and foremost, and then take a look at what's left in my. we're not there yet with money. I want to get the steps done first and foremost, and then take a look at what's left in my budget for this year to see if that curbing is possible, in which case I would approach council again about, you know, getting the, the curbing done. I think it was right around four hundred and twenty-five linear feet of curbing. Um, and I want to say that, that cost came in somewhere around seventeen thousand. Um, but like I said, I want to make sure that we're um, setting all right from a budget perspective. So that would be my first ask from you guys is to be able to utilize the funds and group for the trails to be able to get these steps finished up in the park.
What's it gonna look like? What's it made out of?
Concrete, concrete steps, yeah. Permanent concrete steps. Yep.
Well, that seems like a lot of money for concrete steps, doesn't it?
I don't know that.
They gonna put rebar or something in them and reinforce them? Or is that the plan? Yeah.
They won't go anywhere. And
Yeah.
The concern again with utilizing wood and stone and things like that is, I mean, just from a maintenance standpoint, you've got an issue, but then obviously over time, it just, you know, we're looking, anything we do, including this new playground equipment, which thank you for, you know, kind of that conversation through our budget is going to be the least amount of maintenance possible. Um, we just, you know, trying to keep up on everything. If we can get to a, a, obviously we want things to look good. We want it to be beneficial to the community, but we also want to make sure that things are um, easy, to say the least. So.
Do you know what they're gonna look like? Any kind of rendering or anything of the steps or anything?
No, I mean, that's something we can have a conversation. Joe and I had talked with the contractor a little bit about kind of what those steps look like, but I mean, they're going to be basic steps. Um, and if you guys have looked into the cost of concrete.
We think that's on, it seems high, but.
It seemed high to me, but then the, the other one for.
He's got one for twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, no, yeah, that just seems like.
Yeah.
And so that was a Boy Scout project. And we thought we were getting a free bridge and now it's in, it's costing us thirty thousand dollars.
Well, not to mention the board.
To mention the boards that are on top of it were ten thousand dollars that I've, that we've already replaced. Remember, we've got twenty thousand dollars into that bridge.
Yeah.
So um, again, the goal is to less, less maintenance. So it lasts a while.
We did build the stairs out of lumber. The last time is all treated, big, heavy treated stuff and stone and they didn't last. I mean, they deteriorated and held water and so the idea was to try to get it done where we don't have to go back and touch it for a long time. We got too many things to do. We don't, we don't need to create maintenance and things we have to go back and do over and over again.
And we're not doing a ramp at all. It's all steps.
Unfortunately, because of where that's at and what's there, to do a ramp on that, you would have to have that ramp extend out so far that it would essentially cut that off right there. It just wasn't at the time when that was put in, ADA wasn't a thing. Um, and so obviously moving forward, anything that we do new takes that into consideration, but for this project, they're to have a ramp, it would literally go to the parking lot.
Heath, what's the width on that? Is it eight or 10 feet wide?
Uh, it is, I inches wise, I want to say it's ninety-four and.
It's pretty wide.
Yep.
It's wider than you think it is.
Yeah. And the south side is out of the ground a whole lot more than the, the north side. You see when you're going over by the well, it's, it's sticking way up out of the ground. So there's quite a bit of concrete just on that north side.
So that's what I'm looking for as far as approval, as far as that's concerned. I don't know if you guys need to make a motion to be able to spend that. Um, that's what I'm asking.
Sure, but you have the monkey in the square.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, no.
Thirteen thousand two hundred. Thirteen thousand two hundred. Twenty-six thousand was the high bid.
Yeah.
Or a step for the bridge and park.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The only other thing that I've got tonight, uh, just want to let you guys know, last week I met with um, a board member. Uh, the executive director and assistant executive director of the Hancock County Boys and Girls Club. They're looking at putting together a proposal to come in and utilize the head start room uh, permanently, starting at first of the year. And so I will keep everybody informed on what that looks like and what they're trying to do, but they want to, here's, they want to cater some teen activities as well as offering after-school care um, in the evenings throughout the school year, and then some break care during the school year. So it doesn't really interfere necessarily. My big concern was competing against people like Tammy Parker and ATA and things like that. Their focus is more during school. Um, whereas a lot of her summer activities are focused, you know, breaks out of school. They're not real concerned about out of school um, that time of year. And so don't know what that looks like yet. That was a really good conversation. Um, they communicated really well. So I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunity to see what they come back with as far as what, what uh, what they want to do and how much they want to utilize it. So.
Okay.
So I've got, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
I'll think about.
Thank you.
Patrick is not here tonight. Missy, you have anything for us?
Just one quick thing, um, more money stuff. Um, there was an invoice that we didn't get in the council run. It was brought to me a little later after we'd ran checks. And we need to get this person paid for the curb and sidewalk um, work that they're doing. And the amount of the invoice is seventeen thousand ninety-six dollars. And I was just hoping you guys could go ahead and approve that tonight so I can get this man paid tomorrow.
We're gonna be experts in knowing how much concrete costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
With the curves, the curb and sidewalks.
Part of the uh, concrete work that you guys approved at the last meeting, those of you that were here. And then we, we've started in on them. So that's mainly it's um, all flat rock right now. Not all of it, but the portions that they've got done with the curbs and sidewalk and stuff that they're replacing out there.
Um, I'll make the motion to approve the seventeen thousand and ninety-six for the curbs and sidewalks. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's all I have unless you have something for me. Thank you. Alex, you got anything for us?
I delayed you getting started checking in with Adam on some things, so I won't delay any further unless you have questions for me. I apologize for that.
Okay. No questions for Alex. Anybody, public comment? Come on in, posty.
Yes, I was wondering, uh, several months ago, they had a meeting about the comprehensive plan and ideas and that. What did ever result from that?
Adam?
It's on the list.
Huh?
It's on the list.
Okay, just hoping to get some good ideas and.
Yeah, the next, where we're at in the process is um, we received a lot of good ideas and input from the community at that meeting. And so um, the next step is for me to put together uh, a map based on a, a map of future land uses. Again, we're not touching zoning, but future land uses that would come into play um, if, if a developer or a property owner wants to rezone property. So um, it's definitely high on the priority list when, when I get that done. So once there's a draft, we'll have that distributed to the council and.
I hope we come up some good ideas and we don't end up in a disaster like some neighboring communities.
Definitely not.
Okay.
I second that.
Thanks. Anybody else? Council comments? Libby?
I do not have anything.
You don't have any news from your committee meeting here?
Oh. If anybody would like to donate to the decoration fund, Christmas trees. We, we's broke. We's, we's broke. Yeah. What business owners? Oh, I'm sorry. There are just a few that left. Yeah, no, I haven't. I just, I, we were looking at this book just now and I was like, wouldn't that be cute? Like on the, yeah, the hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So I, I'm like, yeah, well, okay. If anybody wants to donate a tree. No, I don't have anything else.
Right.
No, I don't have anything.
Adam, I was gonna ask you something and I forgot. Um, do are we in process to apply for that ready grant for the library or what's, what's the next step with that? Cause don't, doesn't that have to be done before the end of the year or?
Yes, so um, there's two different potential grants. Um, one is, this is all pertaining to the library, the new library um, in which the town has committed to helping um, basically be the applicant for different grants to make that project happen. Um, so for the, the one grant, the public facilities grant through O C R A, that Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We, Joe and I had a meeting with the library about a month or two ago and um, and we met with the O C R A rep as well. And it was decided to um, we're still gonna apply for it, but we're gonna push it off into the future because they have to still get their bond issuance. Um, so there's some work that they have, the library district needs to do on their um, behalf. So it kind of buys us some time on that.
Okay.
But we haven't forgotten about it. Now, the ready grant, um, that's separate. And that is money that comes from the uh, executive branch of state government. Um, there was, there's a competitive application process for that. It's just that di- different regions apply for chunks of that money. And so in our case, um, it would be H E D C Hancock Economic Development Corporation is taking the lead role on applying for those funds. And um, my understanding is that their timeline was a bit delayed as well with the release of these ready grants. So the bottom line on ready is um, Randy Sorrell's on top of that.
Okay.
And then we would apply to basically H E D C to get that money.
Okay.
So um, he's taking a lead on that. And then again, for the state O C R A money, that's going to be a little bit possibly it could be as early as um, the spring of twenty twenty-four is when we'd apply for that money. But again, it's dependent on um, if they can get um, the, a bond, the, the library board can do a bond. And then lastly, really quickly on that O C R A money, what, what we've learned frankly, the hard way on some of these um, grants is we're always very grateful for the money, no doubt. Though we found that um, contractors tend to pad their numbers quite a bit because they know that it's grant money and they also know that there are more, um, there's more red tape at the federal level that they have to go through. Um, whether it's right or wrong for these grants, it's just a part of it. And so we didn't want to get into a scenario with the um, O C R A grant where um, in order to get five hundred thousand dollars, the entire, the entire project might um, end up costing an additional one or one point five million dollars because it all has to be bid out through the federal um, process, Bacon Davis wages. And basically the whole project would be encumbered under this. So those are more discussions that we have to have more research we need to do. But we want to, we don't want to waste anybody's um, any taxpayer money, whatever level of government it's coming from.
Sure. Yeah, I think the library, they need to decide whether they think it's worth it or not, because it may or may not cost them more in the long.
I couldn't remember if that was the discussion anyway. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's a good question. We did talk about it and. Yeah.
That's good for me.
No, good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-four P M.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks for coming.